Welcome to the Village Board Meeting of the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, October 5th, so if you are listening live Monday, October 5th, and have anything to say or a question to ask, we invite you to call in at any time. The number is 769-1677. Be reminded, as I always do, that you can watch this on the government channel, on PCTV, and on www.pctv76.org, which is a great resource, not only for PCTV programming, government programming, but also the school district. So, our next meeting will be a work session on Monday, October 12 at 7:00 PM. And then, two weeks from today, on Monday, October 19th, we have a joint meeting with the school board, which will take place here at Village Hall, and that starts at 7:30. And then, after that, we will continue with our regular meeting of the village board thereafter, and a work session to follow. So, that's a meeting where issues that the village and the school district jointly grapple with get brought up, and so if anybody in the public has anything that they would like to make sure is on the agenda, I encourage you to contact us at Village Hall, or in Dr. Antonecki's office at the school district, to make sure that any issues that you think would be worth airing out are on the agenda. So, we have a few things to do tonight, and in a moment, we have a representative from Con Edison to talk a little bit about the tree trimming program that's been going on, that has created some issues around in the village, and we thought it was an opportunity to air out what those issues are, and see if we can come to an understanding about how that program will work going forward. But, in advance of doing that, before we get into that, there was one other thing I wanted to do, and that is, let me go to the podium for this purpose, to add a little air of formality. We're blessed in this village to have remarkable people doing remarkable things, and as all of us in the village are aware, we have people volunteering in boards and commissions, and all kinds of activities all around the village. One of the things that those of us who sit here on the board are very familiar with is PCTV. You see what goes on when there are PCTV programs that happen, and when there are live presentations of village board meetings, and political activities, and the like. But, when you sit there in the studio, or sit here in the meeting room, you're aware that there's an awful lot of work that goes on behind the scenes, and a tremendous amount of effort is required, not only to keep the studio running, but also to make sure that the resources are there to film things, and then to edit them thereafter, and to make sure this whole studio runs smoothly. Shane McGaffey does a great job as the station manager, and the PCTV board does a great job under the leadership of Sarah Hoyt, who is here tonight. But there is an unsung hero, a person somewhat behind the scenes here, who doesn't often appear in front of the scenes. And so, our goal tonight is to flip the camera around and bring her into the open, and that is Linda Becker. And she's in the back saying, "Oh, no, no, no." At any rate, I can tell you, it happens that my office is at 25 Wheeler, right in front of PCTV, and I can tell you from personal experience, that it may be that Linda Becker is at PCTV more than I am in my day job. I mean, the woman is tireless, day, night, at all kinds of hours of day, doing the work that makes PCTV happen, and she is very often a person behind the camera when we do a special program, and she's very often the person back in the studio, cleaning up after Shane, and trying to organize his piles of things, and it is a remarkable set of skills that she brings to the fore. So, Jonathan Cunningham is the board liaison to PCTV, and I think John had a couple of things to say.
I just wanted to put a, some specific examples behind Linda. I mean, everything that Peter said is absolutely true. I've known Linda, serving on the board for six years, virtually all six of those years. And, I don't know how she does it, she does it many of those years for free, although she's become our first paid temporary or part-time employee in the history of PCTV. I think that the hours divided by the wage comes up to almost, not even quite a buck a hour, but we're working on it. That's mainly due to her dedication to spending the time needed. I mean, as example, she was probably 16, 18 hours behind the camera during the Pleasantville Music Festival. That was only followed by 16 and 18 hours of setup beforehand, and then 16 and 18 hours of taking down and doing everything, working with Shane. So, she is a staple at the studio. She does everything that none of us want to do, the minutia of legal documents and sorting through all those. I don't know how Peter knew about the cleaning up aspect, but certainly, I'm down to one tetanus shot every two years now, as opposed to one tetanus shot every year, thanks to Linda. And whenever the board goes off track, which is not often, but she brings a sound sense back to the board of practicality of being there, combined with a good business sense. So, she's an invaluable member of the team, and has been for a long time, and this recognition is very long overdue. So Linda, congratulations.
So, in the spirit of all of this, we are about to give you an item that I'm sure you will cherish.
Oh, it's the one on the studio wall.
The Board of Trustees awards this certificate to Linda Becker in recognition of remarkable service to Pleasantville Community Television, and for skilled assistance in the management and studio production of our community public access station. So, there you have it, a very well deserved certificate. Let this be, let this be the first of many times that you appear on this side of the camera, as well as on the other.
Thank you, very much.
And let's make sure that doesn't take any time from behind.
No, of course not, of course not. Thank you, thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Happy occasion and a well-deserved honor. Okay. Matt Glasser from Con Edison is here with us tonight. If you could come up, Matt, and just give us a little description of the program you guys have undertaken, and the purposes of it, and the goals, and all of that.
Thank you very much. My name is Matt Glasser. I'm the manager for the line clearance department in Con Edison. My responsibility is for keeping the power lines free and clear of tree limbs, to try to keep the power going when the conditions get windy. A lot of the, this is a program that's been around for a number of years, but back in 2006, we had a series of major storms, and we realized that our current program really wasn't up to the task of keeping the power going. And, the residents of Westchester County really deserved to get better reliability than what they were getting. So, we revamped the program at the end of 2006, and we added some new parts of the program. We added in additional clearances that mimic those of some of the neighboring areas, and we added in a strong communication program. The important part about this is the communication. For any time you're doing any kind of work, it's important for everyone to know what we're out there doing, and have an opportunity to speak with us, especially with, in the world of tree trimming and line clearance. When you're pruning wires, pruning around the wires, you're going to be dealing with trees that, they're homeowners' trees, they're residents' trees, and so it's something that's very personal, and trees are very important to all of us. So, I'm going to take you through a little bit about our communication program, and what we've been doing. Before we go into an area and we're going to be doing pruning, what we do is, we mail out to all the residents that are fed by the circuit. We don't trim by, like, selecting a municipality, we basically select the circuit, a continuous span of wire, and we mail this mailer to the customers. And this mailer gives some graphical demonstration of some of the clearances, very broad demonstration of clearances, also gives us how you can contact us. There's a couple ways you can contact us. The standard 1-800-75-ConEd phone number, and we also have a pretty unique thing is, we have an email address, where you can directly email our department, and we review that, and we'll get back to customers usually within about a day. And that email address is bwlineclearance@coned.com. And, this is something unique to us, but we figure it's a good way, just to kind of let you know, we're going to be in the area, we're going to be doing some work, and if you have some questions, this is kind of the first level of communication. At this time, we'll also meet with municipalities designate. Sometimes that may be meetings such as this. Most of the time, it's meeting with Department of Public Works, talking about where we're going to be working, pre-writing the work, and that's another important part, because the municipality really is the partner in here. We're all stakeholders in this, and so, we found that to be very beneficial to us, and also to the municipality. This way, we can kind of get a gauge on what's important to you, what are some of the key areas, or what are some important things that you want us to look out for. Second thing we do, now you start getting a little bit more precise for, we're going to be working in front of someone's home, what we do is, we have someone that goes door to door, leaving a card. This is an example of a card. The card gives some information, we're going to be pruning for your home. If it's just some pretty standard pruning, the card will just have a cellphone number for someone called a notification forester, and that gives you the opportunity to call and ask any questions. If there's anything major, if there's maybe a larger leader, or something that's in conflict with the wires, that also will be marked down on here. Also, you have the opportunity, you can go ahead and call the notification forester, and we'll come out and meet with you. If you're not happy with what the notification forester has to say, if you have further questions, we have chief construction inspectors, many of which are arborists, and they will come out and meet with you. And we like to try to get this straightened out before we do the work, and I think that's the best for everyone.
Could I interrupt briefly?
Yes.
Are those people meeting with residents representatives of your contractor, or are they Con Ed people?
The notification forester is a representative from the contractor.
Right.
And the next level, if you have further questions, the chief construction inspector, those are Con Edison employees, the arborists. So, doing all these different things, we think, is a real important part about it, and the whole keeping the communication open is really the key to this whole thing. The next part we would have is, in some cases, you have a tree that is in conflict with the wires, a tree that's unhealthy, a tree that's sick. In some cases, it may be the best thing to do is to remove the tree. If we're going to do a removal of a tree, we would have to get written permission from either the homeowner, or the municipality, whoever is the owner of the tree, and then we would notify the other stakeholders. So, if it's a municipal tree, we would notify the homeowner, because many homeowners might not even know it's a municipality's tree, it's, this tree is owned, it's in the right way, it's owned by the village, but when they come home, and they're certainly a stakeholder in this, and they don't want to be surprised by something being changed in front of their home. So, we like to notify everyone involved. So, that would be a card like this, and again, it's got the phone number for the notification forester. The importance of line clearance is that we have to keep, you know, we have to have the best of both worlds. We want to have trees, we want to have a beautiful community, and all the important things that trees do for us. We also have to have safe and reliable electricity. Trees are growing into the wires, it can cause a major hazard. Trees can cause a fault across the wires, the wires drop down on the street, and it's a major problem. Now, we started this program in 2007, and we worked very hard to try to kind of talk through a lot of the issues, and slowly, we started to see the improvements in the system. And one of the important things this year, and I'm not sure if everyone remembers, earlier in the year, we had quite a few windy days, and when we started tracking, we had about 12 days where we had wind gusts well above 40 miles per hour. In the past, this would have been 10,000 customers out in Westchester, 15,000 customers out in Westchester. These days shown to be somewhere in around 2,000 customers, which is, you know, can be kind of a typical winter day, just depending on how things go. So, we really have seen significant improvement. It's an important improvement, because what it does is, it allows everyone to have the reliable electricity that they want to have, and it allows them to have, you know, a safe environment to live and to play. We also saw recently in Yonkers, there was a major storm. There's no line clearance program that's going to stop 100-mile, 80-mile winds. 100-mile winds are pretty much going to take any kind of tree and send them flying. What we noticed, though, was that other areas of Westchester had in the 40s, and there was little to no activity. So, we really think that this is paying off, and it's something that we need to continue. We're actually just finishing up our first cycle, so I have probably about 80 miles left in Westchester, out of about 2,400 miles that I've done, and with the last 80 miles, that would complete one cycle for Westchester County, and I think it's made a big improvement.
You mean you're coming back?
We come back once every three years, and, you know, this first time around, really, was kind of the tougher time. It was for some of the lines that hadn't been pruned in five and six years, and some of the areas that were pretty well overgrown. We'll be back and pruning, but what you find is, as you get onto a cycle, you have something, we do something called directional pruning, which is the method that is supported by the Arbor Day Foundation and the International Society of Arboriculture. And if you do that, if you continue with that, you really kind of get into the point where the trees grow around the wires, they don't grow into the wires, and any kind of pruning is, can be minimal. So, I think we'll be getting further along there, the work will not be as heavy as it needed to be maybe in the past. I mentioned before the standards that we follow, it's the ANSI A300, it's a standard that they teach arborists to follow, it's a standard that's supported by the National Arbor Day Foundation. And sometimes, people will have questions and say, "Well, I don't think that this looks right," or this, and that's one of the things we're trying to do, is we're trying to go out and give education to people about, well, you know, what is the proper way to prune a tree, what's the proper way to plant a tree? And this way, we can try to get into the point where we don't have the conflict. You wouldn't take a pin oak and plant it directly next to your home, because you know it's going to grow into your home. So the same way, we like to look at, what's the proper tree to plant if you're going to plant near the wires, there's other species that may be more compatible and will cause less of a conflict. We've been handing out guides, we have them online, we've also been handing out guides, and we're also been working on trying to join any kind of a public environmental fairs, and going out and having Arbor Day events. We'll probably be doing more events in schools. So, we think that a good part of this is the education of, get out there before the trees are planted, and encourage people to plant trees, but let's make sure it's the right tree in the right place. So, that's kind of, you know, what we'll hope to focus on in the next three years. So, that's pretty much a short overview of my program, and...
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
You talk about this appeals process, this de facto appeals process that people have. They're notified that the tree is going to be worked on, and then they can contact you. What percentage of those people can override your decision?
It's not as much of an override, as much as a discussion about, well, what exactly work are you going to be doing? And sometimes, people will, most of the calls that we get from this is that people think that we're going to clear cut and cut every tree down on the block, and for the most part, when we go out to these locations, and when you have a discussion about, well, you know, "See this branch here? This is the branch that we're going to take out," and the reason is, because you can see decay on that branch, or... So, once we have the discussion, and we go over what actually is going to be had, for the most part, we can kind of come up with some sort of an agreement. On occasion, you'll have someone that says, "Well, I have this prized oak," and you kind of go over, and if it makes sense to leave a healthy leader in there, and we can review and say, "Well, yeah, it's a healthy leader, I think we can kind of go away with it," we'll leave it. So, we're not looking to just clear cut everything, and...
The reason I ask, I think the attitude that most people have that I speak with is that, even though they get this on their doorknob, there's just no point. You're Con Ed, and you're going to come in and take the tree, and we can raise our hand and say, "Please don't," and it doesn't work.
No, absolutely not. I won't ever remove a tree without written permission from the owner, and as far as the pruning, you know, it's got to be an open discussion. It shouldn't be, "Well, I don't want you to touch the tree at all," right? Because if a tree is growing into the wires, something has to be done. But, we can always have an open discussion about, well, what do you think we should do? And if you think you'd like to have, you know, a member of the DPW come meet with you, we'll meet with whoever. If you want to hire an arborist, or if you have a friend who's an arborist, you know, come out and have the discussion. It's an important thing that we do, is we come out and I'll meet with you. Preferably, we'd like to meet beforehand. That's the best thing for us to do, is meet you beforehand.
That hasn't been our experience, though. I mean, this is all wonderful, and I think you explained it beautifully, and your intentions are great. We didn't really ever have that opportunity to hear that, but our experiences, from what people have told us, has not been that there's been any type of conversation. And in fact, it's all contractors that you have out pruning, correct?
All the people doing the pruning is, are contractors, that's correct.
Okay, so, at what point, when you identify a circuit that needs, the whole line needs to be pruned, does your arborist, the people that work for Con Ed, ever review that circuit and say, you know, you don't need, because if you just go down Bear Ridge Road and see, it looked like, you know, it was hacked, I mean, it was just, I can't imagine, maybe they were, I'm not an arborist, but does an arborist get to look at that circuit and go down and say, you know, "This is a beautiful tree, this is a healthy tree, this is not a healthy tree, you don't have to cut this one up as much," or, I mean, at any point, does that happen?
It's reviewed, actually, prior to the work taking place. So, the work is reviewed, and many times, we'll review it with the DPW to kind of talk a little bit about it, and clearly, you know, in some cases, you know, maybe we will have further discussion about it. And I want to make sure everyone's clear, and I've heard that, you know, they didn't get that opportunity. This is open for anyone, and I think what the problem is, a lot of people who may not, you know, understand that they have that opportunity to complain, and after the fact, it's kind of too late. So, I want to really make sure it's clear. If you call this number, and if you call this number, they'll create a job for us, they know very well. If you email us, we'll absolutely come out, and we definitely have had some good success with meeting with people, educating people, and also coming up with a compromise of, you know, if there's something that we can work with, if they really have some concerns.
But, have you gotten the message, that, at least that we've gotten, which is that certain streets, at least in this town, have just been decimated, tree-wise, by your contractors? Have you heard that?
I've heard some people refer to it as decimated, I'm not sure if I would agree with that word, but I prefer to...
Well, that's the point. I understand what you're going for, and I certainly sympathize with that. What we're going for on this side of the table is, we have a, you know, community that has a tree canopy, and lots of really big power lines on some of our major streets that, I'm sure you understand, people do try to camouflage those a little, because they're, you know, they're carrying, you know, 8 trillion volts down to different parts of the county, and we're just doing our best. And if you put a little Calorie pear underneath that, it's not going to really do it, but you, so you try to, you know, you try to do something with it. There are some trees, I know, that people think there are a few light branches that are kind of getting in the way, and not huge shrubs, that just get completely hacked away, when they're just light branches. And it's this kind of thing that leaves people just throwing their arms up, like, we've lived here a long time, you're watching the trees grow, the neighborhood's looking good, and then it comes in, and it's like, you know, a blight has hit.
Well, unfortunately, even a light branch can slap against the wires, and it can cause the wires to burn down, so, you know, and that's part of the discussion.
I've lived here, for example, I've lived in this town for 20 years, I've never seen branches, you know, the wires burning trees down. I haven't seen that. So, I'm sure that happens, but if that happens, you know, in various towns, you know, from my point of view, and from people that we represent, we don't see that, but we see you coming in and clear cutting streets, almost, you know, above a certain level, and that's what's, you know, I'll take the branch burning, you know, every now and then, just to leave our shade canopy sometimes, you know, with all due respect.
Yeah, I understand. You know, and unfortunately, you know, we get called all the time for the, you know, branches burning, so we see it quite frequently. It's very, it's good that you haven't seen it, that means that something has been holding up. We do try to, other things, we have, we've installed wire that is called TreeWire, it has a little bit of a thicker insulation, which will kind of buy you some time, it still will burn down from a limb laying across it. So, we have tried to do some different things to try to help maintain reliability, but, you know, the important thing...
So you're saying, when trees lean up against wires, they burn?
What happens is, when the tree lays across the wire, the wire eventually will become a conductor. And the carbon, the path carbonizes across the tree, and the tree becomes a conductor. So then, it essentially becomes like you're taking a paperclip and sticking it in an outlet. So, that's something that does happen, I have some videos I can show you.
Well, I'm sure it happens, I just, and I've lived 15 years, I haven't seen that happen.
No, it does, it happens. But I think, you know, an important thing is also to, you know, we can sit and we can talk about it, it's important that we can go outside and look at it. That's really, like, really, that's why I think this is so important, is that if you have concerns, or if someone wants to look at these blocks before we look, go, we can go down that block and talk about the work that we're going to do, and I like to do that beforehand, so we can have the open discussion about what's, what the concerns are.
Well, let me say, I mean, first off, thank you so much for coming, and you have been extremely available and extremely responsive to everything we've asked, and I appreciate that, and I certainly understand that you guys have a set of problems you're trying to grapple with, and we obviously respect that. I would say that of the two contractors you've had in this town, the second one has been more responsive than the first, and obviously, it's luck of the draw to some degree, what person you end up with on a given truck, and how they interact with the public. One of my concerns here is, and it's now on many of our streets, much more starkly clearer than it has been in past years, that we cannot have a tree canopy on the wire side. We have streets that once had a tree canopy from both sides of the street, and created what was, you know, a defining character element for the community. Now, on many of those streets, we have a tree canopy on one side, and we have big, mature trees that are sliced off and are essentially half-trees, all the way down the street. So, I understand why you're doing that, and, you know, obviously, no trees at all would reduce the incidence of trouble with the power lines, but at what cost do we do this? What's the right balance? Another of my concerns is on a street like Bedford Road, for example, which has big, tall trees on both sides. Obviously, some of those trees are getting old and starting to get into trouble, and we understand and respect that. Your new, more aggressive clearance requirements, what are the standards? 10 feet?
Well, the main target area is 10 foot on the other side, and 15 foot above.
And five below.
As opposed to 10 below.
Right. So, at any rate, so now we're talking about a sort of free space around the wires, that means that a new tree planted in the same location as the old trees, the ones that are now, you know, 75-foot trees that have been heavily cut, but still loom over the wires, will never happen again. When those trees die, a new tree planted, you know, even trees in people's front yards, 15 feet back from the power lines, can't ever become majestic trees, because you're going to cut them before they get there.
Well, if we do it right, if, and that's what we intend to, you know, to do, with directional pruning, you can get a bit of that canopy, you can get some of the trees that are larger. What will happen is, the tree gets accustomed to the fact that, well, I'm not going to have my branches into the wire, and the trees tend to grow around it, you can get a canopy over the street. It's not certainly the best situation, I wouldn't recommend planting larger trees on the wires, but over time, you can actually have that, and...
Is there any community you can identify that you've done this pruning over the last five years or so, and have seen this transform this way?
We've only been doing this level of pruning for the last three years in Westchester County, but, you know, I can show you some pictures of some other trees that you could see, a lot, actually, a lot in New York City, some of the London Plain trees really have grown around, and you have, you have a canopied street in some of the outer boroughs, where you also have the power lines going down the center. Again, really not the ideal place.
Right. I mean, you're not going to want us to plant trees like that, that in 50 years, we'll be doing that. But, I mean, I understand your problem.
Yep.
Our problem, and I guess I have a follow-up question to that, is that what you now prescribe as the solution to your problem, means that our community can never again look the way it once looked. And, so, I don't, one question is, why does it have to be different than it's been for the last 50 years? You know, is the weather worse? I don't know.
Actually, one of the things that we did is, we paid a consultant to come in and take a look at the urban forest in Westchester County, and what we found out was very interesting. Part of, part of the things that are going on is that you had a lot of communities that developed in the 30s and 40s, around, kind of, after World War II, and you have communities that planted the same tree in the same... communities that planted the same tree in the same locations, up and down streets. A lot of times, they were a tree called Norway Maple, they're a fast-growing tree, but they're also a short-lived tree, and those trees only live about 60 to 70 years. And what happens is, when you have a group of the same species all planted at the same time, they all kind of take that same life cycle and start dying together. So what we found is that Westchester County really has a over-mature canopy, and a lot of trees that are the same species. So you start, you favor, we talked about, you know, the larger trees, you favor those larger trees and keep the larger trees, don't allow some of the smaller trees to take root, and now everything is kind of maturing at the same age, and you can, from a municipality standpoint, it's an issue that can be addressed.
No doubt, and we have that problem.
And ourselves as well, as a stakeholder. But what I like to offer, I think, you know, kind of going forward, I could see that you really are looking for kind of a middle ground. What I can offer is, I can continue to kind of work with you and say, well, what's the best thing that we can do here, and what can we look at as far as future planting, and anything that I can do as far as offering arborist resources, and, you know, again, pre-planning of work, I can go with you and kind of show you what we're looking at, and you can give us our concerns, but I'd like to have a kind of an active role and work together with you to try to help you.
But given what you're, the standards that you've, you know, handed out to everyone, which is, you know, which are pretty onerous from my point of view, and from the point of view of anybody looking to reestablish the tree canopy in this town, I'm just not sure that, you know, if we go to discuss it with you, you being Con Ed, not you personally, because you've been very generous and nice to come and have this discussion with us, I just feel like it's almost futile. You know, we, we, and bear this in mind, that in an old town like this, in a town that was built up in the early 20th century already, you have the way old Victorian houses were built, which is kind of smaller front yards, and then the majority of the yard in the back. So, you know, we used to have tree shrouded streets, and they were in that little narrow front yard, and then your contractors come through and decimate that tree canopy, and, you know, and you say, what you're saying is, plant it in a better place, well, there often isn't a better place, because those, my front yard is, I think, 20 feet deep or something like that, or less, 18 to the sidewalk, so, or plant smaller trees, you know, little ornamentals or something. Now, you know, if you're used to a maple canopy, or an elm canopy, or whatever, and we're, we've, many of us on the board have been trying to sort of reestablish these tree canopies in the village, and planted many, many trees, shade trees, you know, what we're doing and what you're doing are at cross purposes, you know, and you guys win. You're going to win.
Well, I think the important thing is that I will work with anyone, I have the ability in this program to kind of, like I said, we can go and look at what the work is going to be that's done, and I do have some flexibility to say, well, okay, this is an important tree, this is, you know, this location, I can leave a branch, you know, I can leave a leader in this area. This 10, 10, 15 doesn't mean that it's clear-cut that everything in that area has to go.
Although, I mean, again, you yourself and your department have been very responsive, but, you know, for the most part, the work is not being done by arborists, it's being done by guys with chainsaws. And guys with chainsaws are, you know, it's just zig, zig, zig.
They see the orange around the tree, and it's gone, and you could have a discussion about, but you chopping down this tree, it's got an orange thing on it, you know, that's their answer.
Anything that has a ribbon around it, we have written permission for it. So as I said, I will not cut down a tree without written permission. But we'll say that there's-
I don't mean to argue with you on that, but I will argue with you on that. And I was going to say that the experience we had on my street was very much as you described it. However, they came down Ashland, and they came up Tyoga, I'm on Tyoga, and they put yellow-orange ribbons around the trees, and it took, I was out of town at the time, it took one of our neighbors to track down the right guy to stop it, but those trees already had ribbons on them, without our written permission at all. Now, the work didn't commence, but the trees were clearly ribbed at that point.
That's what we're hearing.
They are, they will be ribbed as a marker to say, well, this is, you know, for, also from when we ride with the DPW, and for customers to say, well, this is kind of what we're looking at, but they will not come down without written permission, and if you see something like that, you know, make the call. But we will not cut it down without written permission. So, again, sometimes a homeowner may think that it's my treats in front of my home, my intent is the notification, and we've been doing that, and if it doesn't happen, you know, people are going to be in trouble. So we work very hard to make sure we stay on top of that. As far as the work that the tree farmers are doing, the contractors are doing, that's my job to make sure that they're doing what I ask them, so, you know, if there's a problem, that falls under me, that's my responsibility, so, you know, like I said, if there's a problem, I'll address it.
Yeah, I mean, the description, or as you described it, I think is part of what's adding to the confusion, because people come and see their trees ribbed already and saying, well, I didn't even know that.
I think that's what happened to trustee Lopez, isn't it? Didn't they ribbon his tree?
I don't think he gave, I don't want to speak for him, right?
He didn't give permission.
I don't think he gave permission.
But it was, now, again-
It wasn't cut down, it was, I have a picture of his tree.
And he's a landscape architect, it's a trustee that is not here.
Right, he's not here tonight.
Couldn't understand, and he's got experience, and I'm not an arborist. I went out, just took a walk around the block, and pictures of the, I don't, maybe some origamist on crack, you know, arborist would approve some of these cuts, I don't even understand some of these cuts, and that people look at them and go, why don't you just take down the whole tree, the thing looks pathetic.
We've got, we've got three or four trees downtown that, you know, honestly, we should just take them down. This wacky, why thing, you know, we just take them down.
It's called directional, it's called directional pruning, it's recommended by the standards, the NCA 300, and it's supported by the Arbor Day Foundation, and the reason is, you're getting the tree away from the wires, it fills in around the tree, learns to grow around it. But the best place to talk about it, and the best place to talk about those cuts, is out looking at the tree, so we can kind of take a look at it. It's hard for me to defend a cut, I'd have to like, I'd like to go meet with you there. One other thing I want to make sure that I make clear is that this program is for your distribution lines. These are the poles that are in front of your home, these are the wires that go to your home. This is different than transmission lines, and those are the big towers that kind of go across the county, which have federal regulations, and any of this discussion that we're talking about doesn't really go there, because those federal regulations that say, something has to go, it has to go, so.
I mean, that, as you probably recall, was another-
Right.
-problem we had when you came through on the high-tension wires, and in the old village cleared out a huge amount of stuff that had been there since time began, and-
But some of it was only four or five feet off the ground, it was shrubbery, so we didn't quite understand, and we were never told that was going to happen.
That's a different program, I don't happen to run the program, but what I will tell you is that that's a federally mandated program, the federal government sets standards there, and if you have a four-foot maple, because it has the capability to grow into the wires, versus if I had a 15-foot dogwood, I'd have to take out the maple, because that's kind of the way the standards are written, but that's not my program. This is all based beyond the August 2003 blackout, this is all regulations that they are enforcing throughout the country, so it's a struggle, I don't happen to manage that program, but I just wanted to make sure I made it clear.
It's your happy day that you don't have that one.
Yes, I just wanted to make it clear, there is a difference, and so, whereas I'd like to try to get the opportunity to talk to people and kind of work things out.
All right, well, you've been generous with your time, and I thank you for coming. Can I suggest maybe the way forward here is for us to take you up on your offer to walk in the field? We'll get Steve Johnson, our DPW superintendent, and whatever members of the board are interested in coming, Matty can arrange a time, and we'll just-
What's left of Pleasantville?
We have about four miles left, and I have the streets in my book there, so I'll provide you with a list of the streets.
I mean, I'd like to know where you haven't yet been, and, but also, you know, we can point out to you some of the parts of it that seem so problematic to us, and maybe you can help us understand whether there is some compromise position, but secondly, perhaps, you know, we can say, look, here's what we've been doing, here's how we've been trying to regenerate the tree canopy, and it looks to us like it ain't going to work under your new regime. So that would be an offer we'd be happy to take you up on.
I appreciate it, thank you.
You know, just really quickly, in some ways, we've, on certain streets, we've tried to reestablish the American elm, which you probably know is a great street tree, and they have a couple of new varieties. We spent, you know, village resources over the last decade trying to reestablish those. Those trees are intended to sort of grow up and over power lines. Now, you guys come in and have pruned some of the American elms that will, you know, exceed the height of some of those wires, except they can't now, because your contractors came in and took some of those branches down. I understand that in the interim, maybe the distribution system is challenged, but there are, there are going to be points that that tree canopy will exceed the height of some of those wires and be successful, but with this program, they can never be. We might as well just forget it, you know, we can't just, you know, we might as well be planting little shrub trees and, you know, scrub oak and leave it at that, is that, I mean?
No, I-
Taxidermy.
No, well, you know, typically, the poles run on one side of the street, and I do prefer to have the lower-growing trees on that side of the street, but as I said, I'd like to go out and we can take a look, and I can bring a couple of them.
Can you, just a random question, what was your budget on this for, are you allowed to tell us that? Because I'm curious, how much money Con Ed, we could have buried the wires.
No, absolutely not.
No, really?
This is-
In our little village, we couldn't have buried the wires?
Burying wires is an extremely, extremely expensive option, it was something that was looked into, actually, after 2006, there was a study done, and it was something in the range of $1,000 a foot or something like that. It really, there are more problems that come with that than you'd know.
Plus then, you can't plant over the wires.
Well, you run into the interference there as well, right, so-
How deep do they have to go if you bury them?
Better than three feet deep, so, but, and there's other tunneling, there's other options there, but it's an extremely expensive option in Westchester County, it was looked at, and I don't think it's the best option. I think, you know, generally, if you do have some problems, like, you know, we hope we minimize it, but you will always have some outages caused by weather, but you can see them, you can find them, and you can put the wires back together. When you have an underground system, you have to, it's a whole production to try to go and find that, so.
Oh, but new subdivisions are all being underground, aren't they?
They are, those outages do tend to take longer to put them back together, because you can't see it. So that's what, you know, you do get some of the benefit, you know, they look different. It's certainly cheaper on a new subdivision that's been cleared out, and that has the trench made by the contractor and paid for by the contractor, so that little piece you may be able to do, but on a grand scale, undergrounding is a tremendous, tremendous.
Well, it's got to be costly.
And, you know, that's one of the things, is that, you know, we're paying for a certain amount of reliability, and everyone wants to have that reliability, we have, we do have to find a balance, because reliability and safety are important, as well as trees and beauty, so we do understand that.
I thank you for your time, and we will follow up. Is there anyone who wanted to ask a question, the audience?
You have to come up, yeah. You may want to stand back, or, yeah, or aside, wherever.
Hello? Hello? Helen Muir, 3 Hayes Hall Road, just came to thank Matt for coming and speaking about Con Ed planning, but I wanted to reiterate what the board had been saying. I sit as a, on a volunteer board, the Conservation Advisory Council, which reports to this board, and we've had numerous complaints from homeowners whose trees have been removed, even though they have made calls, there's a chap on Eastview Terrace, there are people on Church Street whose side lot is next to Church Street, and I don't know how you decide to notify people, it seems it's a courtesy if you believe the tree is on a right-of-way, and there've been some miscommunications between the homeowner, or rather, between Con Ed and the homeowner, where the homeowner was guaranteed the tree was not going to be removed, and it was. And this makes a very uncomfortable relationship with Con Ed, and that's why people are not willing to speak their mind, because they think it's going nowhere. Right now, there are some, there's some clear-cutting on Church Street between Green Meadow, which is a private road, and the next house along, and it looks like a storm came through.
It does.
And I understand that Con Ed or Asplund were contacted, and that the work was stopped for further investigation. I think that Con Ed has talked a great deal about how they have become better at pruning, and I went to a meeting almost two years ago, run by Westchester County Parks, called Conservation Cafe, at which there was a Con Ed speaker, and likewise, we were told that the pruning has become better, and in fact, I haven't seen anything like that, it has become more aggressive. And I think, as you were saying, promoting which trees to plant would be very helpful, but it needs to be discussed at a community level and agreed to, as opposed to ad hoc per homeowner or per job. And so, I would also like to ask that a CAC person be included on the four-mile trek for the last lines.
That'd be a good idea.
Thank you.
George?
Just a quick question, it might be helpful if you can tell us when the village owns a tree and when the homeowner owns a tree.
George, yeah, I'm sorry, I have to say who you are.
Just an observation, I didn't mean to respond on this, that's not why I came tonight, but can someone explain to me when the village owns a tree and when the homeowner owns a tree in terms of removal? What's the distance, and from what point is that decided? I don't know the answer to that.
Well, it's on the right-of-way, you know.
Well, that's, what is, I don't know what the right-of-way is, that's why I'm asking.
And that's actually usually a discussion we have with the village DPW about the right-of-way and what the measurements are, so we work closely with the village to make sure that, you know, we're getting it right, so.
Well, if, you know, on your survey, it depends on your property.
On your survey, it will say, but if you needed to know, we could, your survey would
have it, right?
If in doubt, we owned it.
Yeah. But we don't take care of it, you have to.
All right, well, Matt, I really do thank you for your willingness to come, and we will avail ourselves of your offer to-
Thank you.
-walk the streets, and we can do a little show and tell, so.
Appreciate it.
Much appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We've asked for the stop work, right?
Yes, that's why.
So we're going to do this little walkabout, the spaziergangen, before we-
Before we give them the work order.
Before we-
I think it's helpful to point out where there were discrepancies in the program, and then we can make sure going forward, you know, we're on the same page.
Great, so this will happen in the next week or so then, probably?
I think it should, yes.
Well, you know, I, clearly, there's goodwill on your side, and we appreciate that, I'm not confident that there's any completely happy solution, but clearly, there's a compromise, and we're trying to strike that balance, and I'm pleased to hear that you guys are open to that, too, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll send that over to Pat.
Yeah.
Yes, that'd be fine, thank you, Matt.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Thanks.
Is there any other matter that someone would like to talk? Welcome, come on up. Welcome.
Then we have to discuss-
You can just state your name and address for the record.
Well, the thing is, it's a legal situation, and I don't know whether I should over the TV discuss this thing.
Okay, well, be careful.
If you want to turn off the camera, I'd-
Well, it's a televised meeting, let me say, first off, if you think there's any concern of that sort, either about your privacy or about some legal, legal risk, I caution you that we can speak to you in executive session, outside the public eye, if that's the case. So it's up to you how you want to proceed on that, but this is a televised session, open to the public.
Okay.
We're just doing the executive session.
Doing the executive session.
That'll be after this televised part.
All right.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. It's fine, we just have to state the purpose, a general purpose, you know, later, yeah. Later or now? Well, when we find out what, you know, the matter is.
All right, anybody else?
Hopefully, if you have a microphone.
This time, you have to say your name.
Welcome, George.
Even though we know who you are.
Hopefully, I won't take too long, and hopefully, what I'm about to say is not too provocative, but at my advanced age, I think I can get away with it. George Boland, V O L E N, Ashland Avenue, I want to talk about the police department. And a disclaimer, having worked as a prosecutor for over 30 years, I respect and admire the work they did, both when I was down in the city, working for a fellow by the name of Frank Hogan and others, and up here, working for Carl Begary and others. For the last couple of years, I've been struck by the articles appearing in the Journal News and their databases indicating municipal salaries and school salaries. We're all familiar with it, we know what the deal is. Startling. Top money earners. Police officers, top money earners, teachers, primarily administrators, and the professional staff. The latest Census Bureau estimates released for state that in 2008, Westchester County was the highest taxed county in the entire United States, at least the continental United States. It should come, it's no surprise, and they said the median property tax was $8,890 in 2008. Let me hasten to add, I'm not here to complain about the village taxes. I've been here for over 30 years and basically this board and previous boards have gone out of their way to be, to keep costs in control. I wish I could say the same about the school district. If I were ever to come back, I would want to either be a police officer in Westchester County who retires at 20 years with a full or partial disability based upon a slip and fall, or a teacher, and especially administrator. While I've worked with numerous departments, I always wondered why we need 30, 40, 50 police departments in Westchester County, including the county police and the state police, Department of Environmental, whatever it is. I've worked with them all. And what concerns me is that, I don't know how many police officers we have here, how many detectives, but I'm beginning to wonder whether we truly need a police department. Fortunately, we're in a community, a sleepy little community where we don't have major crimes. And let me define what I mean by major crimes. Murders, rapes, robberies. We do have crimes, but that's the type of stuff I dealt with. Thank God we don't have to do it. And if we were to have one, I seriously wonder whether we're able on our own to deal with it, investigate it. We probably would have to call in assistance, and I know that for a fact.
And that's routinely done.
Understood.
I mean, pleasantly, we haven't had the need for it, but that's true throughout the county.
So realistically, what kind of bang do we get for our buck? So I guess what I'm throwing out here, we have a ticking time bomb here, not only this community, but other communities in terms of funded, unfunded liabilities for future pensions costs. And further, what I find startling is that when I've gone to the school board the last few years, I talked about shared sacrifice on the part of the administrators and the professional staff, not the non-professional staff, because they don't get paid anywhere near those two entities. And for years I said, throw us a bone. By that I mean the taxpayers, shared sacrifice, forego an annual raise and just make do with your step increase and your increased salaries based upon college courses taken over the summer, okay? Finally, this year, to their credit, there's an impasse, from what I understand. The school board is standing firm in response to probably what are unreasonable demands from the professional association, asking for raises probably well in excess of minimal rate of inflation. This year, it's not even 1%. Last year was a little over 3. To their credit, the administrators...
It's actually, it's actually less than zero.
It is, and I, I'm glad you, it's actually 0.9% minus.
That's right.
I checked that out, but I didn't want to throw it out today. To their credit, the administrators foregoed for whatever their raise, a raise this year, whatever it is, to their credit, not the professional staff. Now, do we need a police department? If we need a police department, can we share services with the town of Mount Pleasant? If that can't be done, let me give you a few anecdotes. I tried cases and they were difficult cases and they took a long period of time to try. And I would have, at the preparation stage and on the eve of trial, officers I didn't even know were involved in the case, show up in my office asking for a subpoena. I says, what are you talking about? You're not a witness. Well, you know, I was involved in the case, I responded with this other officer, and then I'd ask, how many years you been on the job? About 20, 21, 22. Oh, really? Let me see, and I start talking out loud. So you can retire half pay after 20 years and your pension is based upon what you earned in that last year? So you're telling me you want me to sign a subpoena, but I don't need you, so you can go back and get time and a half, triple time, whatever it is, to bolster your potential pension? And this didn't happen a lot, it happened occasionally, and I refused to sign the subpoena because I knew what was happening. I knew how sick leave could be abused. I knew how someone could cover someone else, particularly in that last year, to get more When I look at these salaries, $150,000, $170,000? And when I look at the pensions, lifetime pensions after 20 years, and then the occasional attempts to get it fuller, half tax free? I wonder if we, if we can't, can we at least, Board of Trustees, direct our chief, and I assume it's already been done, to the extent possible? If someone's out unsick, I'm sure they have to get a doctor's note in. Or someone's out disabled by an accident, they have to come in with a doctor's note. I don't know whether we have them examined by an independent doctor. One, two, can we insist to the extent reasonably necessary to impose reasonable controls as to unnecessary overtime? And certainly, keep track of when someone is approaching retirement. And even before that, because as you well know, someone can retire and get a pension if they're out on a disability pension. At least insist in that last year, and I realize we're dealing with contracts here and seniority and all that stuff, but minimize the amount of overtime an officer could get in that last year because you know that's when they inflate, they generate. And I know for a fact, in this department, major police departments, there are police officers retiring with pensions of $120,000, $130,000, $140,000, and $150,000. I know that. I'm not bitter, I'm not angry. God bless them for doing it, but I'm wondering where are the people in control preventing this from happening? Every now and then, we hear about the toll taker at the bridge who puts in 5 million hours and gets an incredible pension, and we say, my God, what's going on? And then the powers that be will look into it and nothing happens. So I wanted to keep this short and sweet because these people want to go into executive session. So I guess what I'm asking you, you're gonna be asked by the state controller sooner or later to make substantial, significant increases in monies to fund these pension liabilities. And in terms of contract negotiations, I guess the deal is, the same way with the teachers, for years, well, this district got it, or this police department got it, therefore we should get it. These arbitrators, they live in an unreal world. And God forbid you have some balance or surplus. They'll say, well, there, you got a surplus, you can afford this, but why are they entitled to it? They're not entitled to it, particularly in view of what in this community they are called upon to do. Thankfully, it's rare they have to, they're called into harms way, like they would seriously where most of the major crime occurs, and it's in the major areas. And I'm, and I'm not casting aspersions in any communities, but in my experience, the major cases I tried, not in any necessary order of significance, Yonkers, Mount Vernon, Peekskill, White Plains, areas like that, that unfortunately, that's the nature of the beast, as opposed to sleepy little communities like Briar Cliff and Pleasantville, where occasionally we'll have some crime, minimal crime. And on another note, is there a rule or mandate says that a patrol car has, the engine has to keep running when someone is standing directing...
Have you been a fly on the wall?
Directing people across the street? I saw a car in a parking lot near a diner or deli or something, and the engine was running. I'm thinking, what possible, what possible sense of urgency could there be in Pleasantville to have the engine running to respond to?
George, we, I've complained about that for so many times over 10 years. Apparently, you can't fix that.
Wait, why can't you fix?
I'm here to say...
Is this part of the, even if you're trustee, you can't stop that? Where is this mandated that this be done?
Well, there was a reason for it, which made absolutely no sense to us because this is something that we have...
Is this in law?
No.
No.
Can I back up?
Well, I'm almost, you know, and I...
I had a couple of comments about what you said.
And again, you know, I talked about taxes, just to give you an example. You know, I gave you that median for 2008, $8,890 in Westchester? That's a joke.
People'd be glad to have that.
That's a joke, let me tell you. Me, I'm gonna round it off. This year, $18,300. Let's break, $18,300, let's break it down. Of that, $10,600 is the school district, the county, $2,280, it's not outrageous, and the village, $4,800, that's not outrageous. For the services we get here, some communities are getting rid of leaf service, we get, we get good, and by the way, by and large, the employees I have come in contact, DPW, whatever else, they've been fine. The people that pick up the garbage, the recyclables, the people that pave the roads, gentlemen, gentlewomen, but I want to make that clear. My concern for years has been with the school district. In 1976, my school taxes were $1,359. They're now $10,600. If my arithmetic is correct, that's almost an 800% increase. 800% increase. When I go down, what is that, Manville Road, I'll go down there, I see so many cars parked down that road, I'm saying, how many teachers do we have working in Bedford Road? Have you ever gone down Clark Street and taken a left to go down there? Who are all these cars belonging to? And let's put aside the issue, how could they put up a school without providing off-site park, off-street parking? That's a whole other issue. And I realize they're probably exempt from it. I understand, okay. Anyway, but forgive me, forgive, I'm getting a little passionate here, but getting back here realistically, you know what? I may have, God knows what may have happened for me having the temerity to raise the issue about the police department. Again, they do a fine job, they're entitled to make a living, but they have to step back and be a little reasonable. And those rare few have to be a little less greedy in that last year when it comes time to jack up their compensation to get the most in terms of a pension, and I am affronted by what I have read in the papers. It is outrageous, it is scandalous, and something has to be done about it. And I am, I am truly livid about that. And I'm coming out of law enforcement. I'm coming out, but I guess the other side of me says, if they can get away with it, more power to them.
Well, George, you know what it is. You were part of the law enforcement establishment for many years in Westchester, but when you're sitting on this side of the table, you have some frustrations. You're right. I mean, I've often said...
I can empathize with you.
You know, if you had a graph of how much increase, you know, these, you know, certain employees are displaying versus, you know what the rest of us in society are doing, I mean, ultimately, these are gonna be millionaires and, I mean, you could graph this out. And so our, my job as a trustee, when I look at this, I say, and I say to some of the people in the police force, look, we have to do something, how does a person like me, who's an elected official in a town, in a village, how do we slow down the train? And the short answer is, George, we can't. We can't, because it'll go to arbitration and, as you know, and we'll lose. So a word like this...
But there are other ways. Can't we control overtime?
Could you hold that thought a minute? Let me respond to a couple of things you said.
And again, I'm not criticizing you people. I want to make that clear.
You're welcome. Absolutely. First thing to be said is Pleasantville's included in the Journal News database and you can go and see who made what. I'm happy to report that, that there are none of the numbers that we've seen in some other communities.
By the way, my salary was reported for years, so...
I understand. I don't say that, I don't say that in any way to diminish the problem. Our police at the moment are operating without a contract. Our last contract expired over a year ago. We are now moving towards mediation as the step interim, step before arbitration in an effort to try to resolve an impasse that has existed on our side. So the, you are quite right that the PBA comes to us as, as every other group does and says, well, here's what they're making in XYZ town, and we ought to at least sort of fall into the mid-range. We don't want to be the most expensive and the highest paid, we don't want to be the lowest paid. Do you really want the lowest paid cops in Westchester County?
I could live with it.
Well, and I'm not saying we couldn't...
And I'd go to sleep, but not worrying about it.
I understand. So then the piece of it that, that we have plenty of frustration about is a piece that you referred to, and that is that the pension plans are a product of the fine mines in Albany over the last 50 years, and it's worse even than you described. I think it's not the last year, it's the top three years whenever you earn them.
I think for the police, it's that last year, I could be wrong, but don't hold me to it. Is it, maybe it depends upon the police department, I thought it's the last year, maybe it's three years, but...
It could be either. It depends on the option that the village opts into, re-opsed into the, to the three highest years, no matter when they were earned.
Peter, but the point is, you know what happens in that last year, those three years, where they try to jack it up through outrageous, that's where the village and the chief can step in and say, forget it, it's not gonna happen.
All right, so let me continue. So, and as you also rightly pointed out, and we've talked at some length here, we are confronting next year probably a $307,000 new expense associated with the fact that Albany is gonna dun us for a much bigger contribution to the state-run pension plan because the investments that drive it have, have fallen off and because Albany has for decades handed away benefits to, to employees that simply cannot be afforded. We're driving towards an environment where at the moment the state controller is circulating a white paper that suggests that this year our payment to the pension plan for non-police employees is 7. something percent, next year it's gonna be 12-ish percent. This year, our contribution to police pensions is in the 15% range and next year it's likely to be in the 20% range of gross payroll, including overtime. But the state controller has circulated a white paper that suggests that if the stock market recovers and the investments start to be generating significant returns, it might still be necessary in order to fund the giveaways in Albany, to raise the contributions to pension, to something like 20, 20 or 30% of payroll for non-police employees and 50% of payroll for cops. If that were to happen, or even come close to happening, it would bankrupt many communities and it would become an extremely powerful argument to get rid of employees.
See, that's what I was talking about, the ticking time bomb.
Right.
But here, contractually, are our retired police officers, do they get lifetime healthcare for themselves and their family?
They get lifetime healthcare.
Is that a negotiated item?
They get 50%.
That's negoti, that can be negotiated.
It can be negotiated, yes. So the 20-year-and-out bit is in Albany's hands, not ours. Albany inexplicably some years ago dropped contributions from employees after a certain period of time. You know, there are all kinds of problems associated, and I don't mean to foist it all off on Albany, but I will say that in my personal opinion, there has been, you know, deep irresponsibility there.
Peter, this past year, Albany is totally dysfunctional.
No doubt.
New York is gonna go, it's, I'm not, it's gonna go bankrupt sooner or later.
And maybe that would be a good thing, that would force the thing to be reconstructed under more reasonable terms. Within the village of Pleasantville, I think it's fair to say that we have overtime in pretty good control. I wouldn't say that we have it in perfect control, and there are a number of forces obviously that work against the effort to properly manage overtime, but it certainly is not a circumstance where overtime budget is, you know, a train out of control.
That's good to hear.
And we look at that very carefully every year. We are in a circumstance, as you well know, where if we end up with an employee who goes out on an injury or a disability or whatever, you end up with overtime you didn't anticipate, there are some games, as you indicated, that can be played with the schedule that increase overtime, and we are mindful of that, and, you know, to a large extent, many of our employees don't play those games anyway, but we're, we're careful about that as well. But the reality we confront is that a rank-and-file police officer now, after the fifth year in our current expired, now well below the norm contract, is at a base of about $85,000 a year. And, you know, with some overtime here and there, they can clearly get that number up in the range of $100,000. We don't have employees, as they do in some other communities, making $200,000, $300,000, and I'm happy to report that, but the reality is, these are expensive employees to have and they're expensive employees to have because not only are they fairly well-paid, but the benefits and the lifetime benefits that are promised as part of these pensions are, I mean, speaking as a small business person who is in essence self-employed, impossible, impossible to imagine.
And Peter, I want to make it clear, I don't want in any way to imply that here any police officers are making pensions like I said earlier.
No, I understand, I understand. No, 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 I understand. I understand, I understand.
I mentioned some of the other districts where that's the case.
So, I mean, what we're trying to do here, and we will be looking at ways in which we can share services, and are happy to look in a clear-eyed way about consolidation, but recognize that what we confront is that there are aspects of small-town life and small-town control that are good things. And if, and yet, what I've said to the staff and will continue to say is, if local is better, and I'm perfectly happy to start out with the notion that local is better, it has to be provable, and we have to be able to prove it against the comparison of what other things we could do. So, that's where we are.
Thank you very much for listening to me, and thank you for letting me unburden myself. I've been, it's just been nagging at me.
You're welcome at any time.
Be assured, every point-
And I can imagine what it's been for you too, and, you know, just, and the abuse of sick leave and all that. And let me, one final example, when I was a young whippersnapper trying cases here in Westchester County stupidly, just, I decided to mow my lawn, the grass was wet, with the engine still running, and the, I lifted the thing up, thinking I could just, it was clogged, I could get the grass out. Nothing major, but it was serious. I was back in court the following Monday, continuing to try a case, okay? Now, if I can do that, police officers who have significantly less injuries, no matter what they are, should not be out for months, taking advantage of the system. Not all of them, but unfortunately, in every profession, in every business, in every way of life, there's always a nucleus, a small group, that will game the system and take advantage. I would like to think that's not the case here in Pleasantville. I seriously doubt it, but believe me, I know from personal experience, that goes on as well. So, with that, thank you.
I'm assured. Thank you, George.
Thanks, George.
All right. I think we're ready for our resolutions. Mindy, 189.
Resolved that the pre-check register dated October 5th, 2009, covering check numbers 64548 through 64680, has been reviewed, and they are hereby approved as listed below. The general fund, $111,544.88, the water fund, $7,460.09, the capital fund, $49,799.89, the refuge fund, $8,270.52, the pool fund, $3,554.85, and the trustee and agency fund, $3,447.50, totaling $184,077.73.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? Patty, I noticed in here is a payment of $16,000 and something to Colodri, who is constructing the soldiers and sailors bathrooms project. We're still on track?
We are.
Finish that by the end of October?
Frank and I went over that invoice on Thursday. The items that are open are minor, and we are, we're on track.
So, that building will be operational end of August? I'm sorry, end of October?
Yes.
Great. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Most approved.
The result of the Board of Trustees' review, two minutes of the meetings held on Monday, September 14th, and on September 21st, 2009, and they are hereby approved.
Any comments, corrections? Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
More than a few.
Brian. Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves change order number one for the Bedford and Pleasantville Roads streetscape improvements in the amount of $27,515.25.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, this is the extension of the project up towards the bridge.
It is.
As we discussed last week.
On the west side, that we discussed last week, that's right.
Which is already done.
Wanted to see this number to probably come in a little lower.
Just for the benefit of those watching, we're in the midst of this intersection improvement in the area of Look Oil at the corner of Bedford and Pleasantville Road, and this $27,000 improvement was one of the add options in the contract that would allow us to continue the sidewalk improvements on the same side of the street as the Volkswagen side lot up towards the bridge that goes over the Somme.
Patty, when is this project projected to be done?
Spring.
The spring.
They'll be out of there well before, but the traffic signalization is going to take some time, but-
Because, you know, it's a little confusing now, I don't know if they could do anything that could help walkers and cars to navigate that area a little better, maybe better signage or something, because a number of people have mentioned that-
We've gotten some comments as well. When Steve comes back tomorrow, we'll have a staff meeting and talk about-
Yeah, just some directional, walk here, don't walk here.
Some of the sidewalks should have been closed on occasion.
Right.
It would have been easier for people to find a different way around.
Right. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Me.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the proposal from Independent Testing Laboratories, Inc., 120-11, 18th Avenue, College Point, New York, to provide soil borings slash probes in conjunction with the Bedford Road water main replacement, sounds like an alien procedure, replacement and drainage improvement project as per the terms set forth in their proposed, proposal dated September 30th, 2009.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is, this proposal is one we had seen before and now has more detail, right?
It's more detailed.
Yes, right.
Was necessary, so it's, and it is detailed.
And it now provides a not-to-exceed price of $14,500 for the scope of work included. These are borings associated with the replacement of our oldest water main in the old village. This is a project that is funded through the water fund, right?
That's right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby accepts a donation from the Iron Horse Grill in the amount of $125 for the Pleasantville Beautification Committee projects.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, Iron Horse Grill.
Yes.
Thank you, congrats. Brian.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village assessor to correct the tax roll to add a veteran's exemption to parcel ID 99.15-1-1/90, and further authorizes the village treasurer to refund $86.45 to said property owner for overpayment of first half of 2009-10 taxes to adjust said tax bill to reflect reduction of $86.45 for second half payment pending and due by December 31st, 2009. I'm sure there's a story here.
There's a story. There's a revision on the tax roll, a veteran filed up an exemption, shouldn't appear in the scheduled exemptions that were run back in January, when we set the taxable status date, and that person recognized that they didn't get the exemption on the bill, but they paid the bill, and the only remedy is to correct the roll. The board has to do that.
I see.
And since they only paid the first half, that's all that was due, and we can refund that amount, and we will change the amount due in December so they don't have to overpay and get refunds again.
Okay.
Got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the agreement with Westchester County for GIS services as per the terms set forth in their agreement dated October 5th, 2009.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, this is our annual agreement with them to take advantage of their GIS database.
It is, no charge to either party. What we have, we share, and we respect, they just need a bunch of data and access to CHS and looking for for the past several months, so we're, we're actually engaged with them.
All right, that's great. The village has been making great progress over the last several years in building more and more data into the GIS database so that eventually we'll have the capacity to identify, you know, where every last valve is and where every last pipe is through GIS technology. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. There being no further business, anyone have anything to say to report? All right. Motion to adjourn.
So.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. As mentioned, we're back here next week for a work session, and then October 19th, we have our regular meeting, but it is preceded at 7:30 by a joint meeting with the school board here at Village Hall, and invite your attendance. So, thanks very much, look forward to talking to you in a couple of weeks.